Good to go, Jen. Thank you. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six oh three P M. I've handed off to councillor John Perrow, the deputy mayor.
Oh, for the Indigenous land acknowledgement?
Yes.
The council of the corporation of the township will harm pain would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is the treaty nine nineteen oh five to nineteen oh six territory, the traditional lands of the indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, we may all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, we have an addition underneath the confidential item fourteen point five labor relations. So if I can get a mover and a second or to approve the agenda as presented, moved by councillor John Perrow, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council thus hereby approved the agenda as presented, those in favor, and that is carried. I do have one conflict of interest, it's for myself, and it's for fourteen point two, the adoption of the confidential closed minutes, so councillor Perrow will be able to fix that portion of the closed session. I don't want to be if there's any discussion arising. If there's no other declarations of community interests or declarations of conflict of interest, we'll move on. You can do this, do that as well anytime through council meeting. Item number six is the adoption of the regular meeting of minutes from November twelfth. If I can get a mover and a second or please move by councillor Stefanic, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council thus hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty five as distributed. Any comment or addition to those minutes? I do have one question. I was reviewing the minutes and because I'm on vacation, I couldn't remember, was I supposed to follow up with a letter for the services? For Community Living Oklahoma?
Yes.
Okay, could we find out what the notes were from whatever? Okay, whatever letters, because I was on vacation, I thought I can, I'd like to make sure I follow up. Okay, if there's no other comments or additions, I put those to vocals in favor, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to departmental reports, if I can get a mover and a second or open the floor, please move by councillor John Perrow, second by councillor Drago Stefanic. And be it resolved that council thus hereby acknowledge receipt of the departmental reports provided the regular meeting council, hold on Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty five. And first one is the C A O report. Do you have any additions to your report?
No, I just had one correction. So when we, when we posted the town hall questions, I think I had given the answer of five thousand dollars for council travel budget. In reality, that's divided up into four thousand dollars for travel and one thousand dollars for training, so I just wanted to make that clarification. And just to quickly go through it, housing strategy, we're continuing discussions with Hornpain Housing Corporation is continuing discussions with real impact regarding how to move forward with housing strategies and as a liaison between council and Hornpain Housing Corporation, I'll bring information back to council as we receive it. Budgeting year end as well on its way, I'm sure the CFO will, will have some comments there. I did apply, pardon me, for the celebrated Canada Fund, so historically we've received approximately fifteen hundred dollars for this fund. I've taken it up a level. So I applied for the higher end of this fund, and I'm hoping to keep the fire department busy. So I ordered ten thousand, I applied for ten thousand dollars worth of fireworks, a photographer and videographer, so that we can actually document some of our Canada Day and get it onto our website, maybe some other publications in the future, so we have some better media to pick from. Sorry, apply for advertising and promotion decorations cake eighteen hundred. And through the funding stream, it also allows us for administration cost of nineteen hundred dollars, so we can recoup some of our time. So hopefully, cross our fingers, we have some success. The total grant I applied for was fifteen thousand two hundred, rather than the traditional under, under five thousand. So possible and prevention and repair program, I'm working through that grant, it's been extended, the ministry called me actually today because they're making sure that people that have downloaded are actually going to put it in. They want a hundred percent update, so they're pretty serious about this. I'm hoping to supplement the purchase of the hot box with this grant. Restructuring, next steps, working with the CFO and the unions, difficult nailing them down, I think with what's happening in Sault Ste. Marie as well as vacation time for a lot of people, so I'm thinking probably in the new year, there'll be further discussions and some letters of understanding. And then, as always, the ongoing activities, I had good input from council at the last meeting regarding the key indicators, so we'll try to get you some for the year in January, so for the twenty twenty five year, and we'll keep it moving forward in twenty twenty six. I'm going to get started on the R zone policy, we continue to address citizen concerns, review the strategic plan, and we have reviewed the strategic plan, and I need to prepare the updates, so hopefully to bring that to council in January as well. And of course, on budget deliberations, and that's coming to council in January along with the C A O and the preparation of the ten year plan. In speaking to the ten year plan, when I was thinking about it, it refreshed my memory that the water and wastewater financial plan has to be done every five years. Twenty twenty six is the year in which we need to do it. Watson's done it historically, Watson and Associates, the economists from Toronto have done it twenty sixteen and the twenty twenty one plan, so I've already gotten a quote from them. And Aqua is also quoting, so we'll see who comes in the best. And that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the C A O? Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, Mary, we're going to see you in the ongoing activities a month ahead, address citizens' concerns and complaints. Is that all up to date?
I haven't reviewed it lately, so I can't tell you if it's, I think anything that I have is, but I could be wrong, I need to have to have the schedule in front of me, and I've not been updated by the admin assistant in a couple of weeks, but she's very good at keeping me updated, so if I'm not up to date, it's probably very close.
Yeah, maybe we could have the report for January then?
Yeah.
See everything's up great.
Exactly, would you like to report on, Dwayne?
I've, number of complaints, compliments, what if they're off the date, they've been answered with the time allotted that people respect to have the answer.
Okay, are you gonna, could you just include that in the key indicators?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And no names involved, just yeah, no, just if I could finish, please. Then, Jen requests, and I responded to whatever the numbers are, whatever's done, it doesn't done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, just, I just wanna, before we carry on, councillor Stefanic, I gave you permission to speak first, and then you continued speaking, and then you asked me, you corrected me.
Okay.
Okay?
My apologies.
Thank you. Let's continue on. We have the CFO report. Do you have anything to add to your report, Cindy?
I'm not really, aside from just, you know, we're moving ahead with the budget as indicated by the C A O, we've been working together on some of that, and getting things together for that, we want to do multiple, complete analysis, as more than I am, it's taking a little bit of time for that. Excuse me, in terms of the transition from the acting treasurer, I indicated here it's ongoing, but actually it's not complete. He's pressed along everything that was completed, streamed down, we had the, with all of those items. And for year end twenty twenty, we have completed interim audit, the auditor was across week, and that's been completed so far. Year end working papers are, will be happening over the next so while.
Okay, awesome. Um, was, I saw in the meeting schedule that we're looking at the end of January for our budget. So will we just need the one meeting?
Uh, we may end up with them on more than, at least got one in the books.
Okay, okay, right on, yeah, go ahead.
I would like, that will be the meeting in which the budget is presented, but then there will be a two to three week review period for the public and council, for public input, council input into that budget. And so if there's any changes that need to happen from that input, they would be brought back to council after that three week period, and then subsequently adopted.
Okay, okay. So sometime maybe in the
February. Yeah. If it's just an adoption, it could be added to a regular agenda.
Hey, any other questions for the CFO? Go ahead, councillor Stefanic.
Mary, CFO, can you expand the reviewing service agreements, which are referring to service agreements, please, do you think?
Yes, so looking to things like the, the fire agreements with, sorry, the lumber company and and, sorry, the power company as well. So on the revenue side, we'd be looking at those as well as on the other side.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? Okay, they're being, thank you, Cindy. And moving on now to the clerk's report, Jen, do you have anything to add to your report?
A couple things. So first, this will be included in my January report, but as of yesterday, I did complete all of our annual accessibility reporting, as well as our compliance reporting that we have to do every two years, and they have been published to our website for people to see. And a fun update with regards to school, my last exam for the semester is tomorrow, so.
Good.
And so far, high honors for all of my classes, so.
You're not surprised.
That's fantastic, so you get a bit of a break.
Yeah, I got a couple of weeks and then January fifth, I'm back at it.
Okay. Enjoy your time off.
Thank you.
Any questions for the clerk's report? Okay, they're being, thank you, Jen. We can move on to the public works manager. Wayne, do you have anything to add to your report?
Two things, uh, let's say it, body main valve, excuse me, fair stocks. Nineteen Becker Road, the furnace is now installed, water is restored to the building. Well, they left the business that gives the door looking properly and the thing, and you start moving across already.
Okay.
Currently, as we have the decal down, we did a big flood at three, we do another one at three in the morning, and we do another one tomorrow at three in the afternoon, so we stand after that. Christmas tree lighting, well, obviously that done, and the great news is the sander, the dump truck should be done on Friday. You should use it in this.
Okay.
Sander box will come with it, the dump box will be about a week in.
Okay, perfect. Questions? Go ahead, councillor Kissamaker.
So all the sprinkler systems are fixed now in the nineteen Becker Road, seven thirty last day, we had the last one.
Okay, I need to know what the inside joke is, what happened?
Lots of leaks.
Oh, lots of leaks in the sprinkler system?
No, in the water.
Oh, in the water line.
It was like a sprinkler system.
Hmm.
When they turn the water on.
Okay, I'm getting it now.
Yeah.
Not the intended, but it happened then. Right on. Okay, any further questions for the public works manager? Okay, they're being done, that's good. Thank you, Dwayne. And if I can get a mover, or sorry, to, a vote to accept, acknowledge, receipt of these four reports, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, correspondence action items, we have the first one is support for nation building improvements of Highway eleven and seventeen. If I can get a mover and a second or please, moved by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor John Perrow. And Jen, would you like to read that to me? Thank you.
Sure.
My voice is gonna be done by the end of this week.
No worries. If I have to pause to use my inhaler, don't worry, it's weird asthma time of year for me. But I'm good, it's in my pocket, I'm ready. Whereas Canada's east-west trade and national mobility depend on the trans-Canada highway system, including highways eleven and seventeen across northern and eastern Ontario, which carry heavy freight traffic but are still largely two-lane corridors. And whereas communities along Highway seventeen ultimately seek full four-laning, and whereas a two-plus-one highway alternating passing lanes with a continuous median barrier achieves safety outcomes comparable to bolt-winning at much lower costs and with less land and environmental impact, and can be expanded to four lanes, two-plus-two as traffic grows. And whereas the province of Ontario has announced a two-plus-one pilot between North Bay and Tamagami and an extension towards Cochrane, creating a near-term pathway to implement the design. And whereas modernizing highways eleven and seventeen will improve safety, reduce closures, and strengthen supply chain reliability for mining, forestry, agriculture, tourism, and manufacturing, while enhancing national resilience and emergency response capacity. And whereas a phase two-plus-one build prioritizing Highway eleven, North Bay to Cochrane, and then Cochrane to Nipigon, and key sections of Highway seventeen, western border of the county of Brentford to Sudbury, Sault Ste. Marie to Sudbury, Thunder Bay to Canora, meets nation-building objectives, supports economic reconciliation with indigenous partners, and enables integrated E V charging readiness and low-carbon construction practices. And whereas analysis summarized by the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, F A N O M, shows strong freight demand and a clear safety and economic case for a two-plus-one program. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the township of Hornpain endorses the adoption and phased implementation of a two-plus-one highway program on highways eleven and seventeen as a nation-building project. Be it further resolved that the government of Canada be urged to designate this initiative as a project of national interest under the Building Canada Act and to partner with Ontario to co-fund and accelerate planning, design, procurement, and construction. Be it further resolved that the government of Ontario be urged to expand the announced pilot to a corridor-wide program sequencing works subject to project readiness and safety benefits as follows. Highway eleven, North Bay to Cochrane, and then Cochrane to Nipigon, and Highway seventeen, western border of the county of Brentford to Sudbury, and Sault Ste., Sault Ste. Marie to Sudbury, Thunder Bay to Canora. Be it further resolved that the government of Ontario prioritize these projects within the Ministry of Transportation's major projects division. Be it further resolved that both governments ensure early, ongoing, and capacity-supported engagement with affected indigenous nations, including opportunities for indigenous training, contracting, and equity participation. Be it further resolved that the program include corridor-wide safety features, barriers separated two-plus-one cross-sections, controlled passing frequency, wildlife considerations, resilience measures, closure mitigation, climate adaptation, and clean growth elements, E V charging readiness, recycled aggregates, and lower carbon materials. Be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Prime Minister of Canada, the Premier of Ontario, the Minister of Transport Canada, the Minister of Infrastructure Canada, the Ontario Minister of Transportation, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, F A N O M, the Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association, N O M A, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, A M O, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, F C M, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association, R O M A, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, E O W C, for support, and the County of Brentford for information.
Okay, any comment on the motion? Hey, those in favor, oh, you have comments?
I have a comment or kind of question to you on there. There's a, I'm just asking for clarification, it says resilient measures. Let's see, resilient measure, yeah, resilient measures, closer mitigation, climate adoption, and clean growth elements, E V, E V charging readiness, what is all that?
Where are you, sorry, what is second last paragraph?
Second last paragraph. Got your, uh.
Page one hundred and two.
Yes.
Okay, so what we're, so in the support, so this is a support resolution from F A N O M. So corridor-wide safety features, barrier separation, two-plus-one cross-section, so you know what a two-plus-one highway is?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's basically that barrier that runs down the middle, that makes it safer. And then it also controls the passing frequency, the wildlife considerations, so that's, you've got that. Resilient measures, close, closure mitigation, and climate adaptation. What we're finding with the highways, the conversation is, is that with climate change, we're seeing it. The change, the frequent closures on Highway seventeen are partly being caused by climate change with the amount of water that's being dumped in a rainstorm now, and then it was built not to carry that amount, so we're seeing the washouts happen, right? E V charging readiness, that's E V charging for electric cars right across the northern Ontario. We've had lots of discussions, both this at the Northeast Superior's Mayor's Group and Good Roads is right now, the mayor of Manitowash has a electric car. And through the winter, I believe, cannot go on the north shore with it, because there's not enough power stations. And then now, I believe now they do have a Tesla converter plug, that you can use a Tesla station with your non-Tesla car. But, so that's, it's about us moving us so that northern Ontario isn't closed to that, right? Recycled aggregate, so in the making of highways, you can use a certain amount of compounds that aren't fresh aggregate, so you can use recycled highways, it's called R A P, and you can use that.
Which code?
R A P, I, I'm sorry, the acronym.
Recycled aggregate program?
Yeah, yeah, R A P. And so, and then low-carbon materials, lower the carbon footprint, basically, right? So let's choose the best product. Does that help? Is that what you were asking, or did I just?
No, that was a very good description of it. I'm just wondering, the cost of this versus the cost of a regular highway, does anybody know?
Oh, the two, yeah, the two-plus-one is much cheaper, that's why they went after it to begin with.
Oh.
This started out of Timiscan Shores with Mark Wilson. And that's where we, the, the province has already granted a pilot there, they haven't put a shovel in the ground yet, but that's where they said it's gonna be. So, yeah, and it's, it's been studied worldwide, so we can't go to, like, we look at their four-laning from Canora out west, right? And they're not even done that in between Thunder Bay and Nipigon, look at how long it takes. This can be done substantially quicker, and then add for safety, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So this is basically like a, a two-lane highway, but you got, you got two lanes on one with a, a border in the middle, like a median, and then a single lane, and then it switches back and forth as it goes on.
Yeah.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, and then there's areas where you can turn off and like, if you can get on the other side and.
It would be quite a bit cheaper.
Yeah. All right, go ahead, Jen.
Um, as you were speaking, it made me wonder, you would council like to add the Northeast Superior Mayor's Group and Good Roads to this?
Uh, you could book Good Roads, the Northeast Superior's Mayor's Group would be covered under well, we could, they might, but they're gonna get it from F A N O M, so.
True.
All right.
Okay.
So we can put it to Good Roads, so for sure.
I have that.
Everyone's given that friendly amendment. Um, the one thing I want to say is, we did have a conversation at the advocacy day, because not only does the government have this Building Canada Act, they also have increased the spending to the military. And that was broached too about our highway system in northern Ontario, that we have a weak link at Nipigon. And that, that might be an avenue as well, is look at it as a protecting our country, so we can move goods across, and if we look at a second link, so we might end up seeing another some sort of support resolution for that in the future to use some of those funds for road building. Any further questions on that? Okay, they're being done, I put that support resolution for vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, eight point two is the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, O S F. If I can get a mover and a second or please, moved by councillor John Perrow, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Where is the council of the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal, if I think that right? Has adopted a resolution regarding the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, O S F, calling the, calling on the province to extend O S F beyond twenty twenty six at not less than forty million annually, indexing fund to C P I, establish a five-year funding framework and regulate formula, regular formula reviews, create a five percent contingency within the fund and improve transparent reporting. And whereas small and rural municipalities rely on predictable multi-year O S F funding to plan and deliver critical roads, bridges, water, and wastewater infrastructure. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of corporation, the township of Hornpain, hereby endorses and supports the township of Ed- Edwardsburg Cardinals Resolution respecting, respecting O S F and its request to the province of Ontario to extend and enhance O S F funding, indexing frameworks, stability, stability, formula reviews, contingency provisions, and transparent reporting as set out in their correspondence and resolution. And be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the premier of Ontario, the Ontario Minister of Infrastructure, the Ontario Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Ontario Minister of Finance, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, A M O, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, F A N O M, and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, F C M, with a copy to the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. I am in complete agreement with that. I would ask for more, though, let's go to five hundred million. Any comments on that motion? And those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, we have correspondence information only section, if I can get a mover and a second or please, moved by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor John Perrow. Be it resolved that council thus hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda for the regular meeting of council, hold on Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty five. Any comments on anything in the information only? Anybody want to speak to anything? Go ahead, Jennifer.
I just wanted to bring notice to nine point four. I know there's been quite a bit of commotion about bears recently, just in the north and throughout, and the M and R is putting out for public input from anybody with regards to black bear management. So I do, I did want to highlight that, because there have been a lot of opinions, like in town and a lot of concerns in town, so this is a good opportunity for people to be able to put their thoughts to the ministry.
Okay, great, so if someone goes on our website to our agenda, they can click this link and get all the information they need, right? Okay, right on, thank you for that, Jen. Councillor's tag, what?
Now, three weeks ago, I, I thought I'd be out of the bear area, because it was on this area. On the boat, two o'clock in the morning, there was a cub in our front yard, and it felt horrible.
Three weeks ago?
Yeah, three weeks ago, yeah, three and a half. I, I was debating should I throw some food in, but I know their neuropath, by meaning their brain, will come over and over, it broke my heart, because that bird, that animal was looking for food, I know that. Because it was scratching on the garage door. And it broke my heart to see that. But my neighbor Lyle said, as Lyle has a trail for some mobility and skiing on the far left of C N, see the track, so maybe you find some food at hibernation, I hope for that animal, heartbreaking.
Yeah. Thank you, councillor, you want to, Jen?
Just to speak to that as well, I did assist the ministry with trying to capture one of the cubs, not as a township employee, just a night, like, free outside work time. And they do want to try to advertise more. Um, and they do want to try to advertise more of it, like using Bearwise is a good resource and where possible, they will come, they will trap bears, they will relocate them. Or if it's cubs, they will get them to, uh, rehabilitation centers. Um, so I highly encourage everybody to use it and they do, they are willing to work with residents. So for example, for me, they left one of the traps with me and showed me how to set it up, what to put in it, how to, like, there's bear spray you put in, uh, gave me the authority to move it if I needed to. Uh, and then I just kept them updated if a bear came in that way because they are either in Hearst or in Wawa, they can't check it all the time. But they are willing to work with people to try to ensure that the animals get safely captured.
Okay, thank you.
Nice. Very nice.
Yes. Okay, any further, uh, comments or discussion on any of the information only package? Oh, you're not seeing any? I put the acknowledged receipt to a vote. Those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to committee board updates. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor, Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor, John Perrow. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt to the committee and board in eating minutes, attached the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion on any of the minutes listed in the agenda packet before, so? Okay, being none, I put those to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. Council committee updates. And we'll start councillor Kissamaker.
I have nothing at this moment.
Okay, I thought you were gonna, uh, say applause that you don't have to be on the OPP board, or did we already do that?
Last meeting.
Oh, we did? Okay, we celebrated that. Okay, councillor Barrow. Nothing, you didn't do like a major, like jumped in two feet and over the last month?
Nope.
No? Okay, that's okay. Councillor Stefanic, go ahead.
Quickly, uh, we had a lobby board meeting two weeks ago, uh, in person, and we had a virtual meeting with the FICIP, uh, steering committee, uh, a week ago. And both are full flight in January, but by twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
I speak on behalf of councillor Belinda Kissamaker.
Yeah.
First shot, councillor Kissamaker invited me to attend the Thunder Bay District Municipal League, um, meeting. And we presented the, um, Small Northern Tax Class. It was a successful meeting. And, um, I've had some input from, um, from them since then.
Okay, that's it. Okay, from my, uh, seat, I, well, vacation wasn't much of a vacation, but that's what they called it. Um, I did attend the, uh, Magnetic North, so you'll get your one pager report there in January on that. That was last week and we, uh, there's quite a few interesting developments. And the one report that is not out yet but will be published, it talks about retention and keeping, um, newcomers in your community. But it was quite interesting when they presented on it because I think it would help us in retaining anyone to our community. So, um, uh, when that report comes out, I think we should receive it at council table and have a look at it. Uh, the other exciting news was, um, Manuela and I had a meeting yesterday, uh, with a possible enterprise that could, uh, be located in our community. They're looking for a community to do a pilot run. And we've invited them to come for January fourteenth meeting to present to us. And, um, once that information's in, you can reach out to Manuela for it. I can't really speak to it. It's basically is, um, it recycles all garbage. Everything. It can even recycle what's in our landfill currently. Yeah. So, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
And is there an energy, uh, spinoff?
Yeah, there's, uh, so briefly, um, nothing has to be assorted, um, sorted ahead of time. It gets sorted at the facility. It gets, uh, sorted into, um, scrap metal, minerals, mineral metal or high quality metal, and then organics. And then the rest of it goes into the, whatever the equipment is. And basically, it, it's composted really, and it comes out in three forms. It either comes out in the gas, it could be used as heat, and then this other, uh, compound called, they call it coke. And, uh, but that can be traded, it can be reused. There's, um, no real smell to the project. It's, uh, only when it's transferred from the truck or whatever to bring it into the facility. And, uh, it was, it was a interesting enough meeting that we thought council should hear about it. And, uh, it's a pilot. If we were, um, successful, it would bring seventy to a hundred jobs. Go ahead, Peter.
All I can say is I know it would work. Like, it can work because the country Finland has no landfills. They, they have a similar system, but a much larger scale. And they actually, they, people, people will pay them to take their garbage and they turn it into energy and it's clean.
Yes, this technology came from Europe. So there, um, they researched it, they, it's, uh, this is a German type.
I, I can't remember it.
Um, because the D, the acronym was German, so you couldn't translate the acronym. But anyway, it was, I think it's worth it. We've invited them, they're enthusiastic to come. And you can ask more questions at that time, so.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Um, what else is there? Um, oh, and coming up, we do have another meeting that's coming up, um, for another potential investment in our community. When I was at the sportsman show, we had, um, another booth there and they were talking about our community. So we're going to meet with them and see. Uh, it's just high level right now. And we meet with them next Wednesday on the seventeenth, right? And if it, uh, if there's a possibility at their, their end, they're just looking for information right now for, from our community and what it would take to build anything here. If, um, it looks like they have further interest, we can invite them to council or Manuela can continue down the road with them. Um, what else is there? Uh. Oh, yes, we had the follow-up meeting with the MTO with the Northeast Superior's Mayor's Group. So we had that meeting back in, um, early October, late September. That's when we got the signs changed out at the north end where they say, changed the, the arrows were pointing into the bush. So they flipped them. So at this meeting, I did mention that Horn Payne smell, felt wrong up there. So they're supposed to change those signs. I put it out there to the community, let me know when they're up. Said they could take care of that. But really what we were talking about was the use of the Sultan Road, the use of, um, Horn Payne Highway, um, especially when traffic's being rerouted, talking about the safety of highways. I have to say that, um, the MTO staff, Herb and his staff were quite receptive. We had, there was about ten different items. And actually, I'll forward the items to Manuela so you can have them for information only on the fourteenth. There, there was a list that was done up. And, um, it, uh, it was, I feel like they're listening. So they're, uh, currently in negotiations with the owners of the Sultan Road, that industrial road. And they're willing to increase the budget to them so that it's, it's safer to travel because it's not a highway. Um, they also are doing numbers on our three highways and we're a minor highway. And they talked about the difference, um, what it means for plowing, when they can plow center bearer. They gave us some information on that. But, um, so we're wait, I, I'm not sure the next steps. I actually had another meeting I had to go to, so I had to jump off just before the end of it, and that was just on, uh, Monday. So if we have a follow-up, but I will, uh, send the list, Manuela, and we can put it on for information only for the fourteenth. And, um, that's it. So from there, I guess we're moving on to newer other business. Okay, council appointment process. Uh, Jen, would you like to speak to your report?
Sure. Um, this report stems from direction, uh, uh, like a, a resolution after close session on the twelfth, November twelve. Uh, just directing myself to provide a report. Um, and within that report, I also make a couple of recommendations. Uh, so I recommend a slight amendment to the, uh, council vacancy policy, not because it was incorrect, but just to improve clarity for future situations and to do it retrospectively to the last meetings or to the, the appointment. Um, so that everything is clear. And additionally, I recommend doing a, um, specific confirmatory bylaw for the use of lot as a tie-breaking method at that special meeting. Uh, and I can take any questions.
Okay, I'll go up to the floor for questions for the clerk. No questions? Okay, I want to say really well done on the report. Sorry, I'm trying to scroll down to it here, but, uh, I thought it was really clear, went through. I'm all for the recommendation. Like, I like that the fourth recommendation, I won't have it in front of me, so if I get something wrong. Um, I like that the fourth recommendation stated that we don't even have to do anything. Like, there was nothing found that we had done anything wrong. Um, and that at council table, we do have the purview to make a resolution or bypass policy at that time if we need to. So, um, I just thought the report was well done and I'm all in favor of going with recommendation one, which is the motion that's, that presented to us. Well, if there's no other further comment, I'll get a mover and a seconder on that motion. Moved by councillor. Second by councillor. Gregor Stefanic. Be it resolved that council confirms that on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, appointment of councillor John Perrow complied, complied with the Municipal Act two thousand and one and with GOV. Dot two zero zero two, the vacancy, council vacancy policy. Be it further resolved that council shall enact a specific confirmatory bylaw to confirm the use of lot as a tie-breaking method at the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. Be it finally resolved that council shall amend GOV dot zero zero two council vacancy policy retrospectively to October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five for clarity only. This to state that council may, by resolution at that meeting, break a persistent tie by lot, drawing straws, coin toss, or any other method determined by council, conducted by the clerk, with the method and result reported in the minutes. For the comment or discussion. There being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, proposed, uh, twenty twenty-six council meeting schedule. First up, I want to say thank you for the different way this motion has been written.
I was trying to make it clear.
Also, I want to say Wednesday and six o'clock. Twenty time. For the full year. Actually, I gotta go to my notes because I do have notes.
And may I speak to it?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to explain the reason that I am proposing, you'll see in my report, uh, the reason I'm proposing a full year, uh, schedule is because it is an election year, so there are going to be certain things that are kind of prescribed or certain things that will be, um, difficult for council to decide upon if you fall into a restricted acts period, lame duck. Um, so that's kind of why, but also if it works for this year and council likes it moving forward, that can be an option is to do your, uh, schedules and then adjust as needed if that comes up.
Okay, thank you for that, Jen. Uh, any comments on the meetings? Go ahead, councillor Stefanic.
Yeah, to me, to you, to the clerk, I agree with your recommendation. Makes more sense to me. New council, might be on your council, uh, they have more worries than trying to set dates this way. I mean, it's not written in stone. My, just a, a second question. On special meetings, uh, you designated September sixteenth at all candidates' nights. Who's doing it? What's that come from?
Um, so that was something that, uh, the CAO and I had talked about because normally there's a town hall meeting in September, uh, a special town hall. But because it will be in the election period, it's a weird time to do a town hall. Uh, and it kind of makes more sense to do a town hall early next year or the twenty twenty-seven. Um, so we wanted to still have an opportunity for there to be collaboration with the community and it's, Manuel had kind of explained the all candidates' night to me.
So the, an all candidates' night would be an opportunity, we're assuming that people are going to put their names forward to run in this election. Um, if this council's claimed, then it won't be necessary if they come to town hall. Um, if there are, if there is going to be an election, then it's a perfect opportunity for all the candidates to come together. We will, of course, host it. Jen and I can arrange for that, um, with, with some assistance, um, from staff and getting it up to the media and arranging for questions, um, reaching out to the town and inviting the town to come. So there will be some pre-arranged questions that every candidate would answer. So one question answered by each of the candidates, um, second question, third, four, five, however, and we, we determine. And then an opportunity for an open mic where people from the audience or the community could come forward and ask the candidates' question so that they could get a feel of who is running for their council and who they'd like to vote for.
Okay, go ahead.
As a follow-up, I, I'm fully aware of all candidates' nights is, um, historically speaking, in forty-one years, usually the people that maybe the all candidates, like, were a third party, not associated with, no staff associated with the municipality. It was outside, for example, a, one time was the principal of the, uh, school that coordinated right at the school, as America remember clearly. They brought a non-biased, uh, person that was a moderator. So it stayed neutral, did not do anything with staff, and I think that's the best way to fly.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, that advice, and I think that's good advice and, um, but we can still help to arrange it and host it.
Hundred percent.
Put the chairs out, get everybody there. But yes, I agree with you. It's good to have somebody that's not affected.
Arrange for a neutral moderator, just.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a question on that. Do other communities do it that way? Because I've got a couple of questions. If it's a special meeting, are this council going to open that meeting?
Not a meeting of council. It's an all candidates' night.
Okay, so it shouldn't, so maybe we shouldn't have it listed under special meetings?
That's true. We could remove it and then just have that as something that we'd host.
Okay, because that was my, because I, I have to agree with councillor Stefanic on that is like, if it's a meeting and I open up the meeting and then we're all.
No.
I just don't want to. But I have no problem with, I have no problem with in the background of staff wanting to help for, I think, that part. So we'll take that meeting off of the list.
By whole, the date.
Yeah, the whole date, yeah. And, um, so I have a couple of questions, uh, just to give you a heads up. I looked through my calendar and, uh, the eleventh and the twenty-third, I definitely am not going to be here. I'm not going to be virtual or anything. Uh, the March eleventh and February twenty-third.
February twenty-third?
Uh, no, sorry, September twenty-third. I don't know where I got the February from. I've been looking up the February. Um, yeah, March eleventh and September twenty-third. Um, the other question that I have, and it relates to what Jen had, uh, talked about was the lame duck period. My only concern is, is that I, in the motion, it talks about, uh, the September, like, you can cancel the Wednesday, September fourth meeting. Um, my concern is, is that if the inaugural meeting on Wednesday, the eighteenth, is a special meeting, I'm wondering if we make that a regular meeting so that if we are in lame duck, we are going to go from August to that November eighteenth would be the first meeting that council would be able to make any decisions for you.
That would be a brand new council possibly?
Yeah, but you might have things sitting that, like, I, I just wouldn't want you to push yourself that it's, uh, because then you have council orientation, but then December ninth. Like, I'm just concerned that like, I have no, like, if you want to put it as a special meeting, but then you can put items on it. But I thought with special meetings, we like to write, just have it a regular meeting.
Um, so honestly, I was bouncing between putting the inaugural in regular or in special because it's kind of its own thing, but I didn't want to make a third category. Uh, so anything can be added to that agenda as needed. It just, it fits more within the special meeting because it has a purpose, a specific purpose, which is the inaugural meeting. Uh, but other things can be added to it.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I went back and forth probably four or five times and kept putting it in either the regular list and then the specials. I'm like, it's either or, but it's like kind of its own category.
Okay, great. As long as they can make decisions at that, because that will be their first opportunity. And it's actually the fifteenth, right, is when they're, they're actually council? Like, and that's another question I have, is are we going to be without a council if we're not on the fifteenth?
November fifteenth?
Yeah, November fifteenth. Yeah, I think that's what it is in the Municipal Act, isn't it?
Um, I believe. I believe that within, what is it, within thirty days you have to have your, they have a set amount of days afterwards, and I checked and made sure, so the eighteenth is still.
Correct.
I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, but there is a set amount of days that you have to have your inaugural.
Perfect, that's, that's good. Okay, that was the only concerns I had on that and.
Did we want to change either March eleventh or September fourth? September twenty third may or may not be relevant?
March eleventh, do we want to change that date?
Well, I'm thinking the budget probably be passed by then, right? Because if we're going to have it at the end of January, we have the eleventh and the twenty fifth as regular meetings.
I would assume.
I'm, I'm going to be gone from, like I would just leave it because I'm gone, I think.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
For our procedural by law, generally they're scheduled the first and third Wednesday. But because of conferences and just the way things fell, it made more sense to do it the second and fourth, I believe. So just a heads up, I do know that it doesn't match the procedural, it is still the Wednesdays, but it's just with conferences, there'd be too many absences.
I might be away to the twenty fifth of February, good thing I checked my calendar.
To clarify it, are you asking to put move meetings on the second Wednesday of the month?
Yes, so it essentially in the procedural, it says that generally speaking, they're on the first and third, but that there will be a schedule presented to council and council will approve it. So I'm just clarifying that this time it didn't fall on the first and third because of conferences and, and things like that, just it, it made more sense to do second and fourth.
Is that like an ongoing thing or is that a specific month you're asking?
No, this is mostly for the year, because once you, one, you
It's a ripple effect, right?
Yeah, that's kind of it. So originally I had it first and third, and then I realized it was hitting two or three conferences, and I'm like, well, I have to change those, but then if I change those, there's either three weeks or one week in between meetings, so then to keep it consistent, you kind of have to shift all of them.
I was, I'm, I'm good with the dates and the sense of shifting, and we've done that before in the past, we went to Tuesdays for a while.
Yeah, we did do Tuesdays.
Yes, I can't make the second Wednesday of each month.
Oh, okay.
That's why I was trying to clarify that with you.
That makes sense.
Okay, so we need to, we need to do something about that thing.
Should we bring it back for the next meeting?
We can't, the next meeting is on January. Are you available for the fourteenth? January the fourteenth?
I don't know what day is, what?
It'll be a Wednesday. Okay, does council want to do Tuesdays again?
Oh my goodness, I cannot make that decision here, but go ahead, Jen.
There's a lot of problems with the fire department and
Tuesdays.
And interrupting council meetings, making lots of noise, exhaust fumes, lots of issues.
Yeah, does council want to do Thursdays?
Okay, I'm going to make a suggestion, if we're available on the fourteenth, that this come back to council on the fourteenth, because I need to have a look at it, I can't make that decision, like I went through everything. Okay, so we can just pass a motion that we are going to have a regular meeting on January the fourteenth? Now, go ahead, Jen.
I just wanted to clarify, so the fourteenth is technically the third week of January, but it's the second Wednesday of January.
So January seventh? It'll be a short agenda.
January seventh won't work. We come back to work on the fifth, I come back to work on the sixth.
But you're here the week prior?
No, first and second are.
You're here for the half days till the thirty first. You have published the agenda on the thirty first. Short agenda. It may be this and a couple of other things, this and the presentation from that company and are you available on the fourteenth? No?
No, you're not.
That's the one day.
That's the one day.
That's one day.
Would council consider a short meeting on the seventh?
Or potentially the fifteenth.
Or the fifteenth, yeah, thirty to fifteenth.
Gregor, do you have any conflicts? Are you available? For the fifteenth or the seventh?
I was set to fly on the days that were there, I checked everything.
Yeah, me too.
Soon as that was came on Friday night, I checked all the dates, what my status is, and I can't tell you right now. I have other personal things to do as well, and I, I can't make a minute for new dates, but I respect you and I, I will have to look at my point one six calendar again.
May I make the recommendation? If we leave for the fourteenth, then councillor Perrof, you provide the clerk with a list of dates that you're not available, that she can work around.
Fair enough.
Yeah, actually, if possible, could all of council provide me with their general, like if there's any specific things that you're not going to be available for, like, for example, the, the second Wednesdays or what have you, and then I can kind of come up with some options for the January meeting?
Okay, so we're going to leave for the fourteenth of January?
Or the seventh?
I, yeah, I can't do the seventh.
So we leave the fourteenth?
Trying to go by memory or? Okay.
Well, I could miss the, if I miss the fourteenth, then you guys are all comfortable with it, right?
Okay, we'll go with January fourteenth, we'll bring back the schedule. Or but we're keeping the twenty eighth for the budget meeting, right? That's staying, is there, everyone's available for that?
We could also do twenty first for the council meeting if council wants. I know it's, okay. Sorry. I know, I'm just trying to make it so that everybody can have an input on the
I, I felt so prepared, I came with like I had my dates, like, thanks guys, thanks John, back to the drawing board, I go.
So what I could do if I, if I can make a request and a recommendation? If all members of council could give me their like specific scheduling conflicts that they're aware of for like the year, not just like when you're out of town, but just if you have something on a certain date every month or what have you. And any preferences, if you want to change it to a different day? Any of that, if that could be provided to me by also
thirty first.
Well, my goal is to provide council with my recommendations prior to that so that everybody can respond, so if councillor Perrof has any concerns, he can respond to me before the agenda goes out, so I can see if there's any changes that need to be made. So if, I mean, the nineteenth is tight, it's a week and a half, but if you can do it by then, twenty second at the latest. And then, and it's just a general idea.
You send an email, just looking for notice.
Yeah, if, but I just want to see if that's okay with council, and then I can try to send out some options before Christmas, and then you guys can have until the sixth.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
Sounds good, and are we going to put a motion on the floor that we have our next regular meeting of council is going to be January, Wednesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty six at six P M?
Yes.
Do you need anything else on that motion?
Nope.
That's it. I need a mover and a seconder, please, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Gregor Savannah, those in favor? And that is carried. You're in favor, John?
Yes, I am in favor.
Okay, and then this one here, we need a motion to defer?
I think passing the motion to just do the next meeting. Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Number twelve point one is the confirmatory for the council appointment, if I can get a mover and a seconder, please, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor John Perrof. Be it resolved that by law number twenty one eighty twenty five being a button specifically confirm the use of a lot, break tie during the council appointment on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, be hereby read a first and a second time. We consider read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. And by law number twenty one eighty one twenty five, council vacancy policy, vacancy policy. If I can get a mover and a seconder, moved by councillor Gregor Savannah, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. We have resolved that by law number twenty one eighty one twenty five being a by law to adopt a council vacancy policy and repeal by law number twenty one sixty seven twenty five, be hereby read a second time, consider read a third time, and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, and we are at the closed session. That moved on pretty quick. Okay, and do you want a ten minute break to get everything set up or whatever you need to do? No?
We're good to go.
If you need it.
No, I'm good.
Okay, we're going to move into closed. Thank you, everyone.
You just have to do the motion.
Yes, I know. Okay, do you want me to do it right now? Well, we're doing, go ahead.
It's never.
Thank you. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please, to move into close, moved by councillor John Perrof, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the next portion of the meeting at seven oh one P M be closed to the public in order to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Two, labor relations or employee negotiations pursuant to section two thirty nine, two B D of the municipal act two thousand and one. Those in favor? That's carried.
Good to go guys.
And we're back.
We're back, okay. If I can get a mover and a second or to return to open please, moved by Counselor Dragos Tefanik, second by Counselor Peter Kistemaker. Be it resolved that Council of the Corporation of Township Performance Team does hereby return to open council at eight twelve PM. Those in favor? And that is carried. So we do have a few items business arising from the closed session. Um, we have one declaration of key area interest, declaration of conflict of interest from Counselor Peter Kistemaker for item number fourteen point three on your open agenda package, and it was for a conflict of interest. And the three items that we discussed and closed, um, they are, all three items are still ongoing. And there's no further discussion at this time. So moving on council to the adjournment, the confirmatory bylaw, if I can get a mover and a second or please, moved by Counselor John Perro, second by Counselor Peter Kistemaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one eighty two twenty five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at their regular meeting held on Wednesday, December tenth twenty twenty five, be hereby read a first and second time, considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. And then we have our adjournment, moved by Counselor Dragos Tefanik, second by Counselor John Perro. Be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, December tenth twenty twenty five at eight thirteen PM.